Twenty-third, it is seven oh two P M. I'm calling this meeting to order. Will everybody please arise for the pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and for role call, we do have everybody here today. Welcome, everybody, and thank you for taking time on your busy evenings to join us. Before we get the meeting started, I would like to make an announcement here. I want to bring attention that I am not anybody's puppet. There's been discussion, and I want to make sure everybody knows that I am not backing anybody individual in this town. I'm here for everybody in this town. I expect that everybody up here represents our city as a whole. We all have our own individual ideas, and also, we will all make our own decisions based on what we feel is best for Taylor's Falls. We are going to support one of each other, and I don't expect anybody on this council be meeting outside of this in a three-person meeting and making decisions outside of this time. Moving forward, I expect good collaboration, and I do not want anybody going over anybody's head. That being said also, there's three of us that are very new on this to council. We do need training. I think all of us need training. I sent out training from the League of Minnesota. Well, Mary did. Thank you, Mary. And I expect everybody to, when it permits in their schedule, take this training and take it very seriously. Thank you. Let's begin.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If I could just make a comment.
Please.
Here we go again with the mics. I can probably talk louder without the mics.
I think you can.
So, I wholeheartedly concur, and I appreciate your comments, Mr. Mayor. As I also stated during the election process, I'm an individual. I'm very transparent. I'm going to do what's best for the city. I'm my own person as well, and I'm going to be data-driven as much as I can to make the right decisions that benefits the city as a whole. And I agree, sometimes there will be conflict, but I would expect we all are going to treat each other respectfully and without any kind of undermining or behind-the-scenes small-p politicking, if you will. So, Mayor, I appreciate the comments you made. I think it's important to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, Council?
Well, you know, I'd just like to say the same thing that Tim said, you know, in my almost eighteen years on the council, I've tried to do what's best for the city of Taylor's Falls, all their residents, and I hope that my record here speaks for itself, you know, being transparent and open and bringing good things to the city.
Okay.
They don't.
Sounds good.
Two weeks on.
All right, so first role business, we have to look at the agenda and adopt the agenda. Has everybody had a chance to look at that? Are there any changes? I know one that we need to make. It's not a huge change, but instead of starting with the organizational meeting, we will be leading with hiring of attorney, and then we'll go into the organizational meeting. So, one and two on the agenda need to be flip-flopped. Are there any other changes or additions that anybody would like to make?
I have one, I guess. I would like, if we could just add a discussion on reconciliation of the contract with Abdo Financial Solutions. Just get an update from where we're at on that. We could put that under all business, if that's all right?
Is that what's different than item one in new business?
We could include it in that, sure. I didn't see it that that was part of that discussion, but if we can include it with that, that'd be great.
Just read, or you're asking to put a question in or to have a discussion on where we are at from 2022.
Correct. It would be the 2022 reconciliation.
Got it.
Right.
And that is part of the organizational meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we can talk about that in number one. It's listed under A.
In new business, number one, that's what we're going to discuss? Is that what you said?
Yes, that'll be it.
New business, number one, 2022 bank reconciliation updates.
Yes, yep.
Good. And I apologize, I have one more item. I met with Sergeant Kyle Jones from the Chicago County Sheriff's Office, and he had two questions that he would like me to bring forth for the council, so if I can do that at some point during the meeting tonight, that would be great.
We'll put that under number two as new business.
Okay. Assuming it's time-sensitive and can't wait till next meeting, because we do have liaison reports next meeting.
It is. Yeah, I would say it is, and I don't think it's very time-consuming or anything, so. Just some, actually, there were concerns that the sergeant had that he wanted me to bring forth, so.
Any other new business that we want to add, or anything that we need to add under old business, council?
You know, I think, I hate to add to an agenda, but I think, given what you said earlier, Brandon, and the fact that we appointed liaison roles, in reading through the League of Minnesota City's information and state statutes around how the cities operate, I think it might be beneficial for us to talk about supervision a little bit. I've got a couple of items that will help guide us, I think, and I think we'd be best to make a formal declaration or motion on a supervision of such, because technically, none of us can without it.
And that would be the supervision of what?
A department, you know, liaison roles.
You want to put that down as new business and discussion on supervision?
Sure. Again, it shouldn't take too long, and it probably will require some follow-up as well.
Anything else? Good. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve or amend the agenda as discussed.
Do we have a second?
Sure.
All those appear?
Aye.
All right. We will now move on to the public forum. I believe we have two individuals that would like to speak with us. Rich, come on up. You were first. I beat Tanner to it.
Thank you.
If you don't know who Rich is, it's Rich Smith. So, thank you so much, Rich, for being with us tonight.
Manual player. I have a couple of quick questions. What is the status of Parks and Recs and these other committees, the economic development? Is there a, I missed this somewhere. Is there, do we have someone on the council that I would, I might want to have some volunteer for the Parks and Recs or get some information on how to be a part of that? So, how would I go forward with that? Is there someone to talk to? I know, I don't know if it's Tanner or, but you were on that, weren't you, Tanner, Parks and Recs?
Yeah, until I retired in March.
Excuse me a minute.
Almost a year ago.
Okay, so, there's someone I could talk to, but what is the, who would I talk to on the city council if I wanted to be a part of it?
We're actually going to discuss that today. We'll put liaisons in all those.
Okay, I don't have the agenda. So, and one other quick thing. Is there anything in the works concerning that Springs Hotel? I understand that over in St. Paul, they purchased the buildings from whoever owns those dilapidated buildings, that game and whatever he's doing over there. Is there anything in the works? I haven't heard, but is there anything in the works concerning dealing with that Springs Hotel? In other words, someone had said something about someone that the city could buy it. I don't know if that's feasible. I don't know what kind of budget. I imagine there's a lot of people go, yeah, but I would, I, something that tipped me over on this. You know, when I come into town, and we're pretty involved with some things when we first moved, we were doing the lighting festival, and we also ran a concert series for a couple of years until the pandemic shut us down. Bluegrass music and mountain music, I found at the community center. When I come into town, I just always envision like a Keys Cafe and some playground in the background of that hideous thing is. And, but, and we've all thought about that. Now, I don't have proof. I happen to work, I volunteer at a food shelf not far from here, and apparently, our supervisor, a woman supervisor, got into confrontation from someone, a couple of tenants from there. And I don't have proof in front of me, but this is what she tells me, and they were terrible. And all she asked was for IDs. You have to have an ID to get food, so that she, and it was almost called a sheriff situation. So, that, in my mind, that was when I had enough. So, I know we've all liked to see some, so I'm just curious if there's anything going on with that. And that's my questions. And congratulations to you all. I'm with you all. You're all here.
To answer the hotel situation, it's duly noted, I believe, by everybody on the council, from our constituents wanting answers or something. Right now, we have to wait till we have legal counsel, and we have to do what's right. It is owned by a gentleman, and so, we have to respect the private business owner, but we understand.
Okay, thank you.
I think the other thing that, I believe it was the last, previous council, towards the end of the year, I just made the suggestion of, for any business, any interaction in town that borders on a criminal-type activity, to report it. You know, without data, a lot of things can't happen. So, if nobody reports anything, our hands are more tied than otherwise. So, that's one thing that they had recommended. I thought it was a bit, but. Yeah, if you see something, say something. If you are disturbed by it, notify the sheriff.
And I'll add to that, if anybody's interested, I have cards for Sergeant Kyle Jones. He is now overseeing the Southern project, and I asked for, horrified with his card, so I'll have those. You can come up. He knows that I'm a proponent of contacting him if anything that doesn't look strange, and that's what he wants. Cliff was the same way. So, we're very fortunate to have a sheriff's department that is involved in the community and does everything that they do for that. I mean, they really, they respect the community, and they know the community that they give to will give back to them, and they see that as a relationship, and they're really good at that. So, please see me after the meeting, and I will give you one of those cards.
You know, the Parks and Recs, is there?
Soon as we get the liaison, we'll make sure that we get that person. Yep, I made notes on your sheet. Tanner, you're up.
Am I up?
Come on down.
Or come on up. First of all, I want to congratulate the new people on the council, and you're very easy to pick out. You have little white nameplates instead of black, so apparently, it's like veterans and newbies. So, but congratulations. The reason I wanted to talk here for just a couple of minutes, well, there's two. One is, my hearing isn't as great as it was ten years ago. I don't need hearing aids yet, but if you don't speak into your mics, which don't seem to be working, it's lost, and especially, some of you lean back like this or move over like this, and the only one who ever really did well last year was Troy. Because, I don't know, are these even working tonight? Well, that sounds good.
I like it.
So, please, please, for us, especially people in the back row, it's really hard to hear. This isn't the best acoustical building, I don't think. And my main reason for being here tonight is to, well, I come to most of them anyway. I would like to do a big thank you to Sandra Berg and her wonderful husband, Brian, who have been recording these sessions since last November at their own time and their own expense. Not this past November, I mean, the November before that. So, it's really nice to be able to see a council meeting in case you missed one, like I missed the last one. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
That wraps up our open forum. So, on to old business, well, yeah, old business, where we are going to first start with the hiring of a new city attorney, and then we'll go into the organizational meeting. So, we interviewed two attorneys last week. One is Flaherty and Hood, and the other one is Holstead and Knack. We had good conversation with both. As a board, we felt like we couldn't make a decision that quick, so we did move making any decisions until tonight. So, hopefully, we had some questions. I know some of us reached out to references, and we can talk about what we heard back and have a nice discussion, and then we'll vote on who we would like to vote for. So, your turn.
Mr. Mayor, could I just make a note of some handouts that Mary provided tonight? I apologize, but many of the references I checked didn't get back to me until today. So, I did put together a spreadsheet with both firms, the city that was in play, if you will, their current client list, if you will, and previous as well, and just what they told me, unfiltered, and not only who, but what the person's role in the city was as well. So, it's the firm, the city that they represent, the contact, and that contact's role with the city, and then comments given, and they're not how you want to do this, if you want each ring through what we each.
Yeah, we'll just start with you, Tim. We'll go to Larry, and then we'll wrap over to Troy Lee, and then I'll finish up.
Okay, the other two documents were just spreadsheets that showed their client list, their current clientele, and the populations of those cities. Just to give a little bit of, a little more information on what we're looking at, it shows the city and from the 2020 census, what that population is, and then the total net tax capacity of real and personal property, just to give some idea of how big or small they are in comparison to Taylor's Falls.
Just make one quick note, too, that these will be readily available. They were late editions, so if you didn't get them, yeah, it's working now, right? Just ask Mary, and we'll get you copies of what we're looking at right now.
So, I conducted, one, two, three, four, five, six, eleven interviews, if you will, for the two firms in question. I'll go through what I found and learned for the H and K, as I referenced on the spreadsheet, Holstead and Knack, Holstead and Knack. First was from the city of Fridley. Rick Priville used to be their director of finance. He hasn't been there since probably 2010. He indicated that H and K was with the city for somewhere between twelve and, ten and twelve years, as he recalled, mid-nineties through the early 2000s. So, it's a little bit dated, but it was a reference that H and K did provide. He indicated that their performance was good. They were responsive to requests, no issues that he recalled. He didn't know exactly why the city terminated their services, but they did sometime after 2010, and it was, this was after he had left, but he thought it may have been due to cost. I think they did an RFP, and H and K was not selected to continue with the city of Fridley. I did contact Ramsey, Brian Hagan, the administrator there. I did not receive a call back. The first number I called that was listed in the proposal was, I assume was a fax machine, because I blew my eardrum out. I was able to find the correct number on the web and left a voicemail, but like I said, I had not heard any response back. Ron Morris, I did hear back from late, so it's not on here. I might have to circle back to that, because I'm not sure where I have my notes on that, but I'll come back to that one at some point. Newport, interestingly, both firms had or are providing services there. So, I talked to Joe Hatch. He's the city administrator. He's admittedly fairly new. He doesn't have any knowledge of H and K's performance, since they were not in play when he came on board, but noted that they were replaced by our other firm in question, Flaherty and Hood, about two years ago. He indicated the performance for Flaherty and Hood, overall good. The firm has definite high level of experience and expertise, very prepared for meetings, but he did note that on some matters, their responsiveness was a little bit slower than you would have liked. He didn't indicate, didn't give me examples, just generically. North Branch, I think Mayor and myself all talked to somebody from North Branch. Renee Frye is the city administrator, and interestingly, she's an attorney. So, their situation is a little bit different. They tend to only engage F and H for special matters. They generally are not at council meetings. She feels confident in handling that herself. She indicated they're really easy to work with. They give good advice. Alyssa, who presented to us here last week, has done well, and she actually made special note that Alyssa helped teach them about matters so they can manage more things on their own before they call a lawyer. I thought that. She called it train the trainer, which was interesting. Initially, she said they were a bit surprised that Chris Hood, which is a principal for the firm, was not their primary attorney, but Ms. Frye indicated that it ended up being good, because Alyssa's been very good to work with, very prompt with her responses. The firm has a very good width and depth of services, and overall, they're very pleased with the firm. They're currently utilizing the fee schedule for their billings. They are considering a move to retainer. Pine City, I did not hear from, but I think, Brandon, you did.
Yep, yep, I got back with them.
Bagley is another town of similar size to Taylor's Falls, and just for the record, I didn't contact the big cities that H and K has as clients. I just didn't really feel it would be appropriate. Not a good compare, probably. But Fay Jacobs at Bagley, she's the clerk treasurer. She indicated they have very good attorneys. They know their stuff, varied experiences with different staff, though some gave the impression of being talked down to. Others were great. For her, the major issue is proximity. They're five and a half hours from St. Paul, and it just isn't working very well for them to have somebody that remote. And she stated several times, this isn't a negative on them. I don't mean to give them a negative review, but it's causing problems. We just, having that distance and wanting, they wanting, they're wanting to do things in person, and it's just really difficult to do with somebody that far away. So, they've, they've started to pivot a bit. They did find a more local firm. They indicated to take care of most of their city attorney issues, but she said they still do utilize Flaherty and for HR issues, and she said they're really good with that. Lewiston, I didn't get a call back from. Rushford, I didn't get a call back from. Grand Marie, I did. Flaherty and Hood has represented that city for fifteen years or so, and interesting, they perform nearly all their services virtually, which I was wondering, Grand Marie's way out there. And she said it's like they're there. It's like they don't even skip a beat. She noted excellent respond, he noted excellent responsiveness, definitely a benefit to the city. They never feel like they don't have the time. They never get that impression that Flaherty and Hood doesn't have time for them. Would definitely recommend a hire, and the remote interactions they get are just like they're here. So, those were the interviews I conducted, and Brandon, maybe you did somehow look for my other notes regarding Ramsey.
Yeah, I talked to Pine City. That was, I never got a call back from Ramsey.
Okay.
And I can follow up, if you don't mind, Tim, on Afton, around Morris, because I talked to him today. He actually got back to me. Just last year, they actually had Holstead and Knock for about fifteen years, and as of last year, they switched over. That city has a policy where every administrative service or all their contracts, they renew the RFP, so they ask for another RFP in ten or fifteen years, and last year was their year for attorneys. And at that point, Afton made the decision that they wanted to separate the civil and criminal, so they put RFPs out individually, one for civil and one for criminal. And as of, he did give me the names, but it is no longer Holstead and Knock at Afton. I did ask him, of course, about Fritz, and he said that he didn't have any concerns, any problems with him, everything worked well, so representation was good, but that's as far as he went.
Yeah, and I found my notes. Sorry. And I would concur. He said mid-year last year is when they made the change, and they split their civil and criminal. Mostly, it was Fritz, is what he said that represented him, very knowledgeable and experienced, responsive and timely. But they went another direction, and he didn't indicate why, and I didn't press the matter. So, that was my Afton update from Mr. Morris. And I think the only current city that H and K listed was the Ramsey one, is that correct? And I didn't, I didn't get a call back from them either, so I, there were no current services that I was able to get information on. Yes, I am. Okay, so, and I would like to speak to the presentation that Flaherty and Hood made last week during the interview process. I was, I was very impressed with the passion that they had for the city of Taylor's Falls, also that they did their homework before coming in here and knew some of the issues that we were facing, specifically the lawsuit that's pending. They did mention discussing the Springs Inn. They didn't give us any opinions on those, but they are thinking about them and discussing them. Their presentation was clear, and I believe that they would bring some, you know, great ideas and fresh eyes to our city. Also, the fact that they're backed by a team of experienced lawyers in several aspects of situations or things that might come up in municipalities. Environmental concerns are a big topic of discussion with them, and so, if we're looking for a recommendation from each council member, I would go with F and H. The responses from the homework that we've all done has been very favorable, and their fee schedule is good with the retainer that they proposed, as well as they seem very open to discussion, discussing the ten hours per month, that, you know, if we don't use them long, maybe we could carry them over, you know, in subsequent months. So, I do believe that these would be the correct, the right representation for our city.
I think just to clarify one thing you mentioned, she agreed that there, we could carry ours forward. I don't think it was a discussion. My recollection is she confirmed that we could build a book of those hours and carry the balances forward. Is that what everyone else heard as well?
Yes, that's what I did. Yes, that's what I did.
Okay, good. As I stated in the interviews, I am a full supporter of Fritz Knock. There are a couple of things that impressed me about him. I do have something that I've kind of prepared. And that is that, in my opinion. F and H, Flaherty and Hood specializes in a wide range of legal services. And they're willing to attend council meetings remotely if we ask them to be here. They serve a multitude of cities. Yet they claim they will not view Taylor's Falls as just another client among many. That was in their proposal. They also admitted that their, and this was important to me, they also admitted that their focus. Is on communicating with the council and the city staff. They limit their direct communication with the citizens. Our other candidate was Fritz Knock. He admitted that he fielded calls. He has fielded calls from residents and is willing to talk to the citizens. That his council serves. In addition to his extensive legal experience, he also has years of experience in public service. Fritz Knock has said he will be at our city council meetings in person. Says he wants to be at our meetings. And he told us we should want him to be at our meetings. And I agree with that. I think we should welcome any candidate for the city attorney that has demonstrated willingness and a determination to attend our meetings. If we have any concerns, any of us, about anything nefarious going on or that has gone on. I think what we should, with the previous council, previous administration. I think we should welcome any attorney who has shown a determination to sit in this chair. And be with us and guide us all the way through. I think there's nothing more important than a new council could have at this point. So if we are interested in making a new beginning, I will stick with the person that I supported before, and that would be Fritz Knock.
Can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
Are you stating that there was something nefarious going on with the previous administration?
No.
Because you know, you throw a word around like that, and it kind of lands right in the middle of the meeting.
Actually, I remember hearing a member of this council saying, telling me there was nothing nefarious going on. And I also remember a candidate for this council saying there's nothing nefarious going on.
Right. So there's nothing nefarious going on.
Right, and I think if we actually believe that, we should have a city attorney here at our meetings.
Well, and I don't recall.
Or we shouldn't be, we shouldn't at least be concerned about having a city attorney.
Saying that they would not come to our meetings.
No, I didn't say that. What they did say is they will attend remotely.
Well, and if we ask them to come to the meetings, they would come to the meeting. I remember them saying that.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Yeah, if I could make a couple of comments as well. I, I do not recall them saying they weren't going to attend their, our meetings. They said it was up to us. And the number of interviews I did, there were. Quite a few who said they weren't required at every meeting. You know, why spend the bandwidth, the money, take their time if you really don't need them there? What I heard. Flaherty and Hood say was, if you want us to have a meeting, we'll be there. I don't remember them even mentioning the word virtual. That was from Grand Marais where everything they do is virtual. So I, you and I heard things differently, I think. And I just. Want to make that clear. What I heard Alyssa say. Was if we want them here at every meeting, they'll be here at every meeting. If we don't want them or feel we don't need them at a meeting, they're not going to come. And the many clients, I recall something that you had noted at the last, during the interview, during our discussions, that. You seemed there was a conflict between their size and the personal service. Well, I've worked for, for companies who were very large, and our goal was always. To provide personal service regardless of our size. And I think any successful business, small or large. Wants their clients to feel special. And that's what I heard when I interviewed Flaherty and Hood existing clients. I didn't hear that from H and K. Nobody offered it. I didn't ask for it. It was freely presented to me. So I don't think they're mutually exclusive, large and personal, because I think you can be successful and. Given their reputation, I think they have been very successful in providing that kind of service. And it's backed up by the interviews I had. Again, from Grand Marais. Let's see, said. They never felt like Flaherty and Hood didn't have time. From North Branch, very complimentary things about Alyssa, who coincidentally presented here. I never got the impression from anyone at. A client of Flaherty and Hood that they were just a number. So that's not me. That's what I was told. And I have no reason to believe that. They were lying or trying to pull something over on me, so.
If I, if I can respond?
Certainly.
Thank you. Yeah, and I, I would not suggest at all that. That they were shying, shying away from it. I, I believe that the size of their firm and their specializing in certain areas of law. Is important for a larger city. I still don't, and I guess I am going to disagree with you a little bit, Councilmember Grohl. I did get a feeling that. They specialized, they were really good in representing remotely. A lot of their, you know, a lot of their service was done remotely. And whether or not you can, you agree with that. I, I don't think, and I think it's impossible to question Fritz Knock's willingness, determination. To be here with us at these meetings. And I do think that's important. And that's, that's what really made me feel good about that interview. The other thing that concerns me right now with remotely, having a firm represent us remotely is our technological abilities at this point. Are we set up to do that? Are we, how would we do that?
So I'm confused. I'm sorry. I don't ever remember talking about having anybody represent us remotely. I just mentioned that in Grand Marais, that's the way they do it because of their remoteness. They've got it. From all indications, they've got a great firm that really performs well virtually.
It's actually in their, it's actually in their proposal. Is what they mentioned that.
Okay, we have not decided that as a council, as far as I know, nor did we ever even ask the question.
I, I appreciate both of your points.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
I recall you saying during the interview process that your mind was made up before the interviews even started. And I think that may have clouded your ability to be fair and open-minded in the interview process. And to give the citizens of this city a fair shake at legal representation.
Okay, thank you. My mind was made up from the proposal because I thought it was that good. Because it focused on our city, the size of our city and small town. And actually, I am making my decision, especially with the, with the new council, I am concerned about the citizens. I think the sooner we get up, get somebody here representing us, the better. And I think that, and I think the closer they are to the citizens and the more willing they are to reach out and discuss. Issues with the citizens and talk to the citizens, the better it is for all of us for this new council to start building a bridge. Back to the people. Thank you.
All right, let's move on so we can keep things moving here, Lee, and you're up.
Well, I thought they both have very good qualities. Biggest thing that I was looking at was the experience between all the lawyers. Mr. Nag had forty years' experience. But Alyssa, who was representing F and H, only has three and a half years' experience. But their firm also, their lead attorney has thirty years' experience. But we're not going to have him all the time. And so that, along with everything else. I. Myself am leaning towards the Fritz Nag with the most experience.
You know, you say Alyssa's got three and a half years' experience. Well, she's got that whole team to go to if she needs it. And, you know, that's a pretty diverse group of attorneys with experience in all fields. So I think that's, you know, F and H with Alyssa and that team is a real plus for the city.
And a number of the, number of the municipalities that I talked with commented on the width and the breadth of their services. And it was a real benefit for them to have that. In fact, even the firm that said that they're moving to somewhere, I think it was Bagley, that was moving to a firm closer to home for most of their services. Was very complimentary about their HR services, and it was intending to keep those. So to this point, I've just been giving you information I have and commenting on others. So I'll withhold my, my recommendation a bit here.
Did you have anything else, Lee?
Not really. I, I had also talked to Mr. Morse at Afton. And got his input from that too.
So the, the one city that I got a call back from that, Tim, and thanks for doing all that too, Tim, just great information.
It's my duty.
Pine City. So I had a long conversation with Scott. He was really neutral on what he had to say about. Flaherty and Hood, he liked them. He also shared with me that he has a lot of experience in Minnesota and outside of Minnesota hiring attorneys for cities. He said they do their job. They are wealth of knowledge, and they keep them at an hourly. He said they use them as an hourly, and they've had negotiations with their union, and they've done a really great job with the union negotiations. So. That's what he shared. He said, no good, no bad. He just said, we keep them at an hourly and we use them when we need them. But they are listed as their city attorney. He did say that they don't come to every meeting as well. So. That's to add to the information that we have. Through this process. If I'm even sitting out there, I can see the divide on the decision-making, right? And. It's going to look to me as the tiebreaker if it comes down to what I feel like it's going to come down to just by listening to the information that both, everybody's given. I liked both. In a great world, I would say, let's hire both. I would. I think having Fritz sitting here every meeting would be great. And then I think the mega power of the knowledge that we can get from Flaherty and Hood would be wonderful. I mean, we have HR support, you know, we don't have an HR nightmare, but we have questions and we don't know it. We're not trained in that. And if we were, we're not trained in the city side of it. I truly believe. Because of the divide that I see here, I really, and as much as we need an attorney. I feel that we need to go out for another RFP. And I think we need to do a better job as a team deciding which. Law firm we want to represent the people of Taylor's Falls. That's where I'm at right now. And I know it's in our packet that we can discuss if we want to go out for an RFP. That has to be voted on as a council, so I would like to start there and we'll move from there. If that's not a. Thing that the council's willing to do, then we'll vote on the two that we have. So. I need a motion and then a second to talk about the RFP. Do I have a motion? Okay. All right. That's fine. That, hey, that's why we're here. So I have no problem. So moving forward.
I was trying to formulate a question in my mind to respond. We do only have two. And we do have, it sounds like some disagreement on who the preferred firm would be. I think there's a pretty stark difference between the two. Not from experience. I think, but we're only comparing two, to your point.
We also, three of us weren't part of the RFP. Thank you so much for getting the RFP going for us because we'd be in the world hurt if we didn't have this to start. But both of you, thank you, but.
I, I think both the presentations were very informative. I've already commented on how I felt their proposals were put together. But if I'm, and I'm kind of anal about this, I like to, I like to make my decisions on data. I like information. It needs to be informed. That's why I contacted all these cities because I wanted to know how each of these firms were performing. And there was kind of a dearth of information for, for H and K. It was kind of a male male response that I got from the clients that had used them before. And there's not much of a bench there. Fritz is pretty much it. There are a couple of other attorneys, I think, and one support staff in their firm. And there's not a lot of bench. And we deal with that every day with our staff in here. We're a small community. We don't have a deep bench to go to. If Mary got sick, for example, or Steve unfortunately passes away, there's no bench there. And in my work experience, that was one thing that I was very considerate of. What's your bench? You know, you got to have the experience. You got to have the technical background. Both of these firms, I think, can probably perform admirably for us. But all of that being equal, I look at just the, the list of services that. That Flaherty and Hood have, the positive responses I got from, from their current clients. Given these two, I find it difficult. Not to, to recommend we would go with Flaherty and Hood, given these two firms. Now, if the council decides that we don't have enough information, this is an important decision for us. I could possibly be convinced to open another round. The problem with that is. It's going to take us another two months to get a legal firm on board. We, we're already on the month, so now we're talking about the entire first quarter of not having any legal representation. We've got some pretty important things coming up that will require legal representation. I guess if I had a recommendation right now, given everything that's going on with the city. My recommendation would be to go with Flaherty and Hood for a one-year contract. Or thirteen months, however we want to do it. Gauge their performance. We can always move to another firm if we feel necessary. I just think there are so many wheels spinning in this, in this community that need fixing and healing and. Need to be dealt with, get them out of the way so we can move forward. I'm just running the city. I would sleep really well at night knowing that I've got that whole portfolio of tools that Flaherty and Hood has. And I tell you, Alyssa and her colleague, well, Alyssa was very formal. It was a little uncomfortable for a while. Mr. Mayor, I don't like people calling me mister or it's, I'm not, my wife, she was Mrs. Grode at school, and whenever she saw kids out in the community, they had to call her Mrs. Grode. That's the way it was. But you know, we call each other, or maybe should call each other, Councilmember Anderson. Mayor Wyber, Councilman Julikite. That's what she was doing. That's the way they're trained, I would assume. It was very respectful. So I really enjoyed at the end. When she kind of let that loose, put all that formableness aside and said why she wanted to represent. She and their firm wanted to represent Taylor's Falls. It had everything to do about the personal nature of it. She grew up in this area. She remembers, fond memories, she has fond memories. She grew up in this area. She remembers, fond memories, she has fond memories of Taylor's Falls. She currently works with North Branch, so she's familiar with our county. There are just so many positives about Flaherty and Hood that it was difficult for me to move past.
The confidence level was there. And I mentioned the passion for the city. She talked about the beach up. She talked about the drive-in, you know, and trips here as a kid. Her front picture's taken in the park. And she knows this area and she knows the surrounding cities. And she's worked with Shisago County, so there's a familiarity and a confidence factor that, and enthusiasm and fresh eyes. And just, you know, everything about their presentation was positive and forward and about Taylor's Falls. So I would have no problem with Flaherty and Hood.
And if I could, I just want to agree with Councilmember Grode to a point. And that is that with everything that we, this city is facing right now, including the lawsuit and everything that we have going on and the new council, I don't think it's in the best interest of the people of the city to wait any longer. And I do think we should have the vote tonight. And I would like to ask for or make the motion that we vote on an attorney for the city of Taylor's Falls. However, before I do that, I do also agree that we should do this one year. One year. We need to make sure that our representation is good, solid, and legitimate and looking out for the best interest of the city. So if we only go one year, then we can, if we need to make a change later, we can. I will make the motion that we call for a vote on city attorney for the city of Taylor's Falls and ask for a second.
Councilman Troy has a motion to vote for the city attorney. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a second. Let's start with Mr. Anderson. Let's start with you for a vote. How we're gonna do this, I know we kinda have two different ways. I think we, me personally, I say we say law firm that we're gonna, that we want to represent. Mary will keep track of who says what and then we'll see if it passes.
Okay, I will vote for Holstead and Knack.
Lee?
Holstead and Knack.
Tim?
Flaherty and Hood.
And Larry.
Flaherty and Hood.
Sorry, Brandon. No, I knew it was coming. You know, I stayed quiet on both of these. Like I said, I think they both can do the city justice. I wanna make sure that in our year contract with either of them, looking at the Flaherty and Hood contract, it ends on December thirtieth, twenty, or thirty-first. So they went February first. I want both, whoever gets it February first through December thirty-first will be the city attorney. We'll relook at it at the end. My vote is for Holstead and Knack. All right. Now we are moving on to the organizational meeting. We are going to finish what we started on our first meeting of the year, where we are going to pick liaisons. I need a motion and a second for Resolution twenty-three dash zero-one dash zero-five.
I think we have to go through them for the motion for it.
Each? You want me to go through each liaison? So we have to do a motion, a second to discuss them. So you want me just to read them? No, that's fine. Okay. So we need a motion, a second, then we can discuss and decide who we want. Can I get a motion, please?
So move.
A second? Troy, a second? All right. First one is Councilmember Liaison for the Planning Commission. This one's empty. So we had Councilman Revard and obviously we need to replace him. So any thoughts on Planning Commission?
You need a position.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if I could do it.
How many commissions can we hold?
Two.
Two each? Okay, thank you.
All right, so.
Yeah, I will, oh, I'm sorry.
Larry nominated me. I would be honored accepting that.
Make a motion to.
No motion.
No motion? All right. And then the EDC, Economic Development Committee. I've been on this committee along with Councilmember Anderson. So one of us, either you can stay, I can go. I was.
I will actually nominate the mayor, Brandon Wyber, for EDC as well. And that will free me up for another commission or the two liaisons that I have right now, Fire and the Law Enforcement.
I would second. I would agree. I can second. I'd agree with Councilmember Anderson. I think it's something we talked a lot about, economic development. And as Brandon and I have thought, I look at him as our CEO. And from at least a ceremonial perspective and some other duties he has. And I think it's important enough that our mayor lead that effort.
Thank you. I'd accept that. Larry, you?
I'd absolutely.
Okay. Lee?
Yep.
All right. So Mary made note that I'll be on the EDC as a liaison as well. Next is Park and Recreation Commission.
You know, I'd like to nominate myself for that. I've been, you know, the liaison for Parks and Rec most of my tenure on the council. We've brought a lot of good things to the city through the Parks and Recreation. And I'd like to get, you know, the team back together and start moving forward again.
I would second that nomination.
I would agree as well.
I think you did a wonderful job on there. I agree.
I accept.
We do have an alternate. Do we wanna place an alternate on there or do you feel that we need to right now?
I think we'll wait till we get the team together and we can gather some troops.
Okay, sounds great.
Actually, Brandon, I was gonna ask about that. I see alternate mentioned a number of times, but I wasn't sure it was an alternate council member or an alternate community member.
Community member.
Is that what it is? Okay. And one thing, too, that we make note, that we'll make sure that the descriptions for each of these groups will be readily available and hopefully eventually on our website, so, you know, we can all see what they are and get more involved. Because we really want the community to continue to be involved with us on these. Our next one is Heritage Preservation Commission. And Larry, you were last year's.
Well, I'm personnel now in Parks and Rec, so.
Lee, are you available for this?
For heritage?
Yeah.
I can do that.
I would like to throw another nomination, Councilmember Tim Grode for HPC.
I actually had Troy or Lee.
Very respectfully declining. You had Public Works and Personnel.
So we, looks like you're up. Yeah?
I'll second Lee.
All right. Next is the Library Board. They are meeting this Wednesday. So whoever is going to be involved on this, they've asked me to let you know that they really need one of us there on the Wednesday meeting. It's nothing major. They're gonna be talking about their addition that they'd like to do, so they need somebody from the council here or there.
Well, I think we're probably all booked up at this point. Yes?
So each can be two. So Troy is with the Fire and the Police.
Right. I think we need three on most each, right? Do we need three each?
No.
We've only always done two.
I, if I can, I've been thinking about something since our last meeting and I know the decision has been made. But I really do feel that the mayor should be connected as a liaison with one of our departments in the city. And after, after last, our meeting last time, he didn't have a liaison position with any of our departments. I know in the past, we put Law Enforcement and Fire together. But I would like to entertain the possibility and I apologize to everybody if this, you know, if this comes to fruition and we need to reopen that nomination. But I would like to suggest to the council that we do consider having the mayor in a liaison position and probably one of the best ones would be the Fire Department. If you're open to having that discussion at this time. And that would, that might, perhaps that would free me up for some of these other things, too, or anybody else would be interested in it.
I really think Troy, I'm sorry, Councilman Anderson, that the mayor is well positioned on the Planning Commission and the EDC. You know, as Tim said, he's, you know, the de facto CEO of our business here. And is, you know, it'd be great to get experience for him on the Planning Commission to see how the process works and to learn it. And also, you know, to lead us forward economically as we go into the future.
Oh, and I agree, Councilmember Julikheim. I was not suggesting that he be removed from that position at all. So if that's the either or that we're in, then I will withdraw that consideration. But go ahead, Councilmember Grode.
Yeah, one other thing I'd like to mention, give me an org chart. It's quite dated. I think Larry and I are gonna have to go through that, the Personnel Manual. There's an org chart in there. And there are a couple of positions there. One is Administrative Liaison that isn't listed here. And I believe that would be the Clerk Treasurer, reporting up through that. That was one thing I was gonna recommend. If we have an Administration Liaison, again, the CEO of the organization, I would say that should be the mayor as well. I think the zoning and the way it was written, the zoning, Administration, reported up through the Personnel Liaisons. And then there was the Fire and Police, all that other stuff. One thing that was missing also is who, the Emergency Management, who has that? And from what I understand, I thought maybe it went right up through the Fire Department, but it doesn't. So that's a requirement for the city to have Emergency Management. And right now, it looks like it's kind of floating out there where nobody's been accountable for it.
You mean Cert team?
That's what we do, yeah. But the way the statutes show it, it's Emergency Management, I believe, which would be our Cert team. And so that's gotta land somewhere, too. And I was gonna say, if we're tallying numbers here, I could certainly need the Stormwater Utility Board on the border review for that. I'm a liaison to Public Works anyway. It would seem to make sense that either me or I do that. But I could certainly take that on.
Is it in our bylaws that we can only do two? Is that what was voted on whenever it was voted on? Is that something we can amend?
That I don't know.
And change so we can be on board, too?
I don't know.
Because we do need somebody at the Library. I mean, I have no problem saying I can go, but we just need to make sure that we're representing the Library Board as well, you know.
I know last year there was not a liaison with the Library Board. I don't know why that was.
Well, you know, they kinda run that.
It's kinda separate.
Autonomously, you know, and so if we just, if they needed a, just a representative to, you know, to navigate, speak to their, you know, what they're doing on roundtable, you know, that's a possibility, too.
I think that's what they're looking for. From what I understand, they need somebody there to share with their going forward with expansion. And then they want that information brought back to council so that we're working together to make sure that that can happen with the amount of money they have or if we come back and say, "Well, you know, you're gonna need more." And they just need that guidance. So if one of us can be there, this Wednesday for sure, and then we can report back and find out when the next meeting happens, I mean.
Why aren't I coming to the end of our Wednesday at least, and maybe we can table a formal decision on that? I thought Library Boards were differently than the other commissions. They were a bit more independent. Now, granted, they need some sort of relationship with the city council, but I don't think it's the same as a Park and Rec Commission. I could be wrong. But I'll attend Wednesday.
Okay.
I should check my schedule before saying that, but.
All right, so.
And like I said, the Stormwater Utility Board Review, I would nominate myself for that.
And then the Highway Task Force, Larry was on it?
No, if I could, I guess I would, I would like to nominate Lee Samuelson for that Stormwater Utility Board as well. If he's willing to consider to take it and then leave it up to the council for discussion and possibly a vote.
And I don't have an issue with that.
There's, in the past, I mean, there wasn't somebody on there, so could two people from, could we put two liaisons on that? Me both have wonderful knowledge, but I don't see why they both couldn't attend or meet and work together.
I just think in the past, it just said Councilmember Public Works Superintendent, which we do not have, and then we're still an administrator, so.
You're gonna meet by yourself, whoever's on this one for now. I know it's kind of a bad joke.
It's true.
You have to laugh or cry.
Councilmember Grode does not have an issue with Lee Samuelson serving on that?
I don't, no, no. I was just trying to fill a gap. All right. So we had a nomination for Tim. We had a nomination for Lee. We need seconds on either. I second Lee. Okay. With the Audit Services, we've already discussed, Abdo Akamires has been our auditing firm. We did say on basis, like, as long as we got their contract. Did I skip something?
Can I just ask a couple more questions?
Yeah, yeah.
Circling back to the Emergency Management, can we put that on the Fire Department? Would seem to make sense, whoever that liaison is, also be the liaison for Emergency Management. I imagine they have to work hand in glove.
Yeah, I would think so. I would think the Fire Chief would be involved in that.
So that would be one recommendation I have. I had a recommendation for whoever was doing Parks and Rec, that a member of the Lions Club be included on that. Probably have a presentation to the club and they appoint a representative.
It was always Leo, Council.
And I guess I can wait with my Health Officer question, because that's next on the agenda then. Okay, that, I think that clears everything up for me.
Say, just circling back to the Highway Task Force. I'm glad to do that again, continue with that one.
Are we good with Larry continuing with Highway Task Force?
I'll nominate him.
All right. Sounds great. Make sure that we get crosswalks to tell people when they can walk.
As much fun as it is.
And those other liaison positions that Councilmember Grode mentioned, I think we should try and consider those at our next meeting if we can get along the agenda. You said Administration and is there one else?
Well, Administration, I think, was the only one that I saw wasn't.
Okay, just Administration.
Appointed to include.
So let's add that to the next meeting, Administration Liaison. And then let's, if we're all in favor, let's add Emergency to the Fire Department Liaison. Okay, are we good?
Yeah, let me just add one question. Councilman Grode.
Yes.
Administration Liaison. So that's in addition to the Personnel Liaison.
Well, I think, yeah, I think it might become a little more clear when we get to that added agenda item that I had about supervising work.
And I think the bylaws, which you also mentioned, somebody did, would be important if we could find those. Because that would just lay it right out there. Then we would know. So I will make a request for that. I know I've done that. I've been getting emailed, but I will make a formal request for the bylaws.
Okay, let's get back on order. So Audit Services, we're just revisiting. We said, are we getting a contract from Abdo Akamires to audit for the 2022? The contract is in packet. Are there questions on the contract? Are there questions on the contract?
Which contract are we discussing, Abdo?
This, this is, this is Abdo Solutions, or Audit, sorry, uh, this is for the auditing of 2022. Um, after our, our first meeting, I wanna share this with everybody because I did get a phone call. Um, it's not documented, obviously, cause I was on the phone, but I did talk to Brad from Abdo. He showed um, that he wants us to come in together as unison after seeing the contract and make sure that he's ready to go on, I think the twenty-ninth, am I right, Mary, is when he wants to start, or the thirtieth of this one?
Thirtieth and thirty-first, Monday and Tuesday.
Okay, so he was, he, he kept it on the calendar, but he's not comfortable without us coming to an agreement as a full council. Um, he watched our video, so he called me right away, about eight-thirty in the morning, we were on the phone, so um.
It just has to be with all.
Yeah, yeah, and we do have the contract, so um, I guess, are we all still in favor of moving forward with Abdo doing the 2022 audit?
Yes, I, I would make a motion to that effect.
Did I think that's.
Any, any questions on that, part of Abdo?
So this brings us through, so they can complete their work for 2023 as well.
No, this is just for 2022.
This is just the audit.
And so the past council um, approved the budget of sixteen thousand five hundred, Brad shared that covers everything. Whether it takes them one month or two weeks to do the audit or eleven months, it's all built into there. But he just needs us to say that we're, we are okay with him moving forward on the audit portion.
And I only really have one condition, I know we discussed, and I, I don't know if you mentioned this or not, but did Brad Felsted, is he coming in February? Cause I would like, I would like to make that request, I would like him to come here and, and discuss this with us. So we, we have better understanding of what he's doing, uh, what his focus is. So if you could reach out to him or if I could ask the council to agree that, that Clerk Treasurer reach out to Brad Felsted to come and make a presentation. Hopefully in February.
Okay, thank you. And now our last uh, discussion is the Health Officer, we, we do need to find a Health Officer. I know, Tim, you said you had some information or comments you'd like to make.
Or questions that.
Okay, alright, that's good, questions are good.
Understand, we, we need one. Um, my first question, is this a paid engagement or appointment?
It has not been, from what I understand. Can you, can you confirm that, Councilmember Julikheim?
No, it's voluntary.
Okay. I, I, I know we have some residents who are RNs, I'm not sure we have residents who would wanna do this from a physician's standpoint. I don't know of any, maybe there are, uh, but I was also wondering if this is uh, kind of a community service that um, St. Croix Health would be willing to provide our city. As a gift in kind or, or whatever they would call it, um, but it's community outreach for them. They're in our backyard, a lot of us go there for our, our healthcare. St. Croix isn't much different than, than Taylor's Falls and, and, you know, our geographies and, and locales, so. It, it's something that I, I'd be interested in knowing if that's something that they can tap into their staff positions with, um, to see if they wanna volunteer their time. I honestly don't know how much time is required, um, and what sorts of things come out. I would imagine there'd have to be some interplay with um, Emergency Management, Fire, Public Health kinds of things, but um.
At this time, if I could read the statute, at least, not the whole statute, but um, it's two thirty-six oh one, I wanna thank the Clerk Treasurer. I, I actually had somebody else who was interested in this, and she's a registered nurse. So she wanted to know what the requirements were, I sent her the statutes and the first thing she saw was that a city health officer shall be a physician licensed to practice medicine under the laws of the state of medicine.
Interesting. That mayor was the field doctor.
Now, the duties are a little bit, might not.
Unless they live here though, right? Or they could have two licenses, yeah, so they might have double license, right?
The duties might not be as, as you suspect they would. Unsanitary conditions, they look into stuff like that. Regulation State Board of Health, Health Officers shall enforce the nuisance ordinances of the city as they relate to matters in any way affecting the public health. Different things like that. Uh, Health Officers, given the power, it shall be the Health Officer's duty to enter and inspect any and all premises where food products are stored that are to be offered for sale to the public. Uh, it shall be a condition of all licenses granted within the city that the Health Officer is given the power to inspect any and all products sold on any licensed premises. Uh, bait nuisances wholesale, so um, just wanted to get that out there, it's not, you know, it's a little different than I suspect.
Not what they like the school for.
I do like your idea though, uh, if somebody reaches out across the, across the river, I think that's a good idea. If we don't have anybody stepping up, do we have any doctors in the house?
Is there a doctor in there? We could also um, ask Schaefer, what they do, um, Center City.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea. Well, why don't we, um, Mary, can you send out the statute, the twenty-three six oh one to everybody? I, I do have a copy um, sitting on my desk at home, so I'm glad you read that, Troy. But um, send that out and then let's move this to, we could just keep on piling up our first meeting in February, or we can move it to the second meeting. But let's move it to February, um, and then, why don't we do do Jildons, reach out to the hospital?
I could do that.
And then um, actually, I, I can call Center City too, cause I wanted to reach out to them anyway, so, and I can call Schaefer, so I'll call both of them. Um, I'll just leave messages for the mayor to call and we can see what they're using. And then we'll just come back together and, and have that information. I don't think we can obviously make any decisions right now, so let's move that.
Perfect.
Alright, that wraps up.
Can I just clarify one?
Yes.
The Library Board, are we tabling it or are we just not going to do a liaison and we're gonna have?
We're gonna just have council to meet when they need us, I guess. So we just need to find out when their next meeting after my liaison, and if they would like us to join, one of us will.
We can come back and report.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna remove that from this resolution.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, and then remove also from this resolution the, the, the doctor.
Yep, and I'm gonna table that to the next one.
Okay, alright.